Just to make a marker for the recording, welcome everyone to the March 21st Special Planning Commission meeting to discuss the petition for a zoning text amendment for Warfield. And at which point, I will also ask, I'm not sure if any members that we would call members of the public are here tonight, but I would ask them if they would purely use this as an informational session, haul questions and comments for the town council meeting, if they cared for them all. I think that would be a more appropriate venue for that particular series of questions. So gentlemen, over to you.
Okay.
Thank you very much for taking the time for this special session. Appreciate the attention and focus because a lot of information we're going to try to get through tonight. Three primary pieces. We're going to go through the questions that you'd answered, that asked us. The first set of questions which we've responded to in writing.
Attention and focus.
Second set of questions where we've responded also in writing. And then we'll do some work on the comprehensive plan and kind of how our plans and direction are comporting with that overall comprehensive plan. So the slides tonight are just a representation and a slight amplification in some cases of the question, of the answers we've already provided to your questions, but we're happy to go where you want to, or you'll direct us as we go through how you want to absorb and address any additional questions that come up, things of that type. So with that, I'll turn it over to Steve.
Okay, so what we're going to start with first are the original questions that we had written down from the planning commission meeting. There were seven of them. And first question was, what was approved and when for angled parking on Warfield Avenue and Buttercup Road as part of the existing PEC preliminary plan approval? And for this, I'm going to let Sean answer.
Good evening. Sean Davis with Morris Ritchie Associates for the record. When we were going through the building permit process and site plan approval process for building F, we were evaluating the various parking scenarios based on feedback that we had garnered through the historic district commission and the planning commission. And we revised the parking that you see immediately adjacent to Warfield Avenue to reflect that. And as part of that, we prepared this overall exhibit, which was presented to the planning commission during those discussions and ultimately the approval for building F. This parking plan was never part of the approval. It was part of the exhibits that we had presented, and it was included in the, we'll wrap this into the PEC modifications standard. So that was the genesis of the plan and the status of the approval. It is not technically approved. It was presented and is part of the PEC.
Thank you.
Any questions about that? Okay, we skipped something there by accident. Somehow we got misnumbered here. Okay. Okay, how do propose, how do proposed tax amendment for Warfield impact the architectural integrity of the project? And how does that relate to the small town character of Sykesville? First and foremost, the applicant is not proposing any changes to the bulk regulations or height. We don't think that it does impact the architectural standards.
It's hard to read.
I warned you about the max.
Jiggle the wires.
Yeah.
Thank you. Wow. It's possessed. We don't think it has any impact because we're not changing the height or bulk regulations. Warfield is in a historic district. We're subject to oversight by the historic district commission. Any future preliminary, conceptual preliminary or final site or subdivision plan would be subject to review and approval by both, and which ensures the continual architectural integrity of the project. Furthermore, we have documents governing preservation, and they're not a part of the current discussion, and they include the preservation guidelines, the new construction guidelines and standards for signage, and the development pattern book. Any questions about number, that was actually number two. It said three, but number two?
Did you address within that the small town character of Sykesville?
We, again, we don't think that it impacts it because as currently approved, the zoning ordinance allows up to 590,000 square feet in six-story buildings. That's pretty extreme. I'd say what we're proposing, or what our mindset is about where the project would be heading, is something far less intense than that. And certainly from a traffic standpoint and a water and sewer standpoint, too. In fact, there's not enough water and sewer capacity to accommodate a project of that size. So what we had previously had approved under the PEC, with the PEC preliminary plan, was not as dense as is allowed. But we had a water and sewer capacity issue there. With a shift towards residential and away from commercial, it's actually less intense on both traffic and water and sewer.
Again, there's a little bit there that doesn't quite work for me as a man who drove down 32 at 6:30 every morning for 25 years and saw the traffic increase and increase and increase at that particular time. How would you define traffic impact?
Well, so we've had preliminary discussions with our traffic engineer and have a proposal kind of in waiting for the next phase of this after we get through this part of the process. And he has told us, and Sean maybe can speak to this a little bit, but he has told us that the number of trips is far less for residential than it would be for the PEC, the current PEC plan. Parking is far less intense as well. But I'd go back to what's already approved is something that allows about 590,000 square feet, 591,000 square feet, plus 181 residential units. And that's fairly intense, a lot more intense than anything that we've ever put in front of the planning commission. Six-story buildings are fairly intense. And so where we have some question is, if that intensity was not desired, then why does the ordinance, you know, why was it approved in the first place?
What it says in the Plan Employment Center District, to its purposes, I mean, there's a quote down here, "It may well be that what you say is true." I'd love to see the study. "We need to contribute to a reduction in vehicle miles traveled."
Sure.
If it does that, then all well and good. I'm not entirely convinced, given the fact that all of those vehicles from those possibly 1,800 people, if we add the property where the zoning would change beyond that, all going on the road at the same time and all coming back at the same time would not have a significant impact that we need to consider.
So we'll make sure we note that. Rather than take Sean's word for it or my word for it, we'll get a study. And we always have to get APFs, you know, go through an APF test, for one thing. And that always involves a traffic study. And that always involves an analysis of schools. And it always involves an analysis of water and sewer. So we'll note that.
Thank you.
Thank you. What is the definition of a zoning text amendment? Simply an amendment to the zoning text, not to be cued about it, but it's, you know, it's really basically rewriting or making amendments to the existing text rather than starting from scratch. And I think where the bigger concern was with the next question, I believe, which was, what other, what are the other actions or alternatives to the proposed text amendments to accomplish the developer's goals? Sean, do you want to speak to that real quick?
Bunch you said over here. So when we began this process, we had a conversation with Joe about the alternatives for accomplishing our goal in terms of including, increasing the residential and reducing the non-residential. And we said there are fundamentally three different ways that we can approach this. The first one would be to apply the town's existing zoning categories to the property, most specifically the R-7500 and the BG Business General, and specifically zone specific areas of the property accordingly. That would require some additional modifications within the R-7500 for your small town planning guidelines and the PUD ordinance that you currently have on the books to accommodate those and in terms of, you know, the bulk regulations. So that was alternative one. Alternative two was to create a whole new ordinance that would, I'm sorry, a whole new zoning classification that could be, for lack of a better term, to say mixed-use development, and start from scratch. Or the third would be to just modify the existing PEC. And I think it was determined that the difference between two and three would just be the name of the ordinance, more than anything else. It would be like, okay, do we call this mixed-use development or do we call it PEC? And because of additional discussions or additional modifications that would need to be made to accommodate the comprehensive plan, to update all those documents, the additional requirements for the zoning plan and the zoning ordinance and the evaluation of a mixed-use development category throughout the town of Sykesville, we decided that it would be most expeditious and probably the cleanest to just modify the PEC. I think that's a fair representation of the process that we went through. So we looked at three, and we determined that this modification was the most appropriate.
I think that there's some merit to that. Can I put a point to you, which is merely a point, it's not, it's just for discussion, okay?
Absolutely.
It's not a opinion or anything like that. If you look at the language of the Plan Employment Center District, look at its purpose, and we have to pay attention to that as a planning commission, we can't simply ignore it, it would seem to me that what you're asking for is of such a scale, that the change in zoning and the change in the language of the zoning is of such a scale that it really constitutes a change of use, if we were to take this application as a whole and not pass it out. And perhaps that really would have been the appropriate road to go down, to ask for a change of use rather than a change of zoning, which is very, very difficult in my estimation, to make correspond to the language of the municipal code that we have.
Would you like a response?
Well, that's why I put it up.
Okay. So use is dependent entirely upon zone. You look at all of your zoning categories throughout the town. It's based specifically on a particular type of use. So I would counter by saying, the use is determined by the zone in which it's located. And so whatever, whether we called it Plan Employment Center or mixed-use development or whatever, the uses that are enumerated under there, if they conform to the purpose clause of that particular category, then they're appropriate within that category as legislatively determined. So I've made a lot of mistakes in my career and several on Warfield. One of them was, when we started the process, however many years ago, was sticking with the PEC. And there was a lot of discussions as to what we name it at the time. And that was void of the applicant who was not involved in that process. That was kind of an internal process. It was prompted by the discussions between the applicant and the Warfield Development Corporation. And if I had my druthers, I would have named it something else.
Okay. There's a section, section B under purpose, which talks about creating a mixture of office, retail, recreation, hotel, institution. I don't need to go, I'm sure you're familiar with the language of that. I just want to point it out for the purposes of the meeting. And again, this is a question. As I understand it, if we were to recommend this to the council and the council were to pass the application that's before us, including the changes of conditional use to permitted, principal permitted uses, it would be perfectly possible for a developer to only have essentially residential uses throughout this whole developed property. And none of the commercials, none of the other things that are in this language, retail, recreational, hotel, they don't need to be in there. It could be purely residential, purely residential development. Because under those definitions, elder housing, senior housing is defined as being commercial. Now, it strikes me that that's a semantically strange thing to do, but that's the way it is. Your response to that in the light of the language that we're supposed to be dealing with here?
Sure. Two things. First, when we talk about, when I talk about, and we anticipated in terms of the senior housing, not active adult, there's a big difference between what I would consider an active adult community, which is targeted towards 55s and older, or senior housing, which in my opinion is a commercial enterprise, because there are commercial aspects of that. It's a single owner who's running a for-profit, in most instances, business that is housing seniors, that provides an additional level of care in some way. It may just be a cafeteria, all the way up to some level of, you know, healthcare to them. I classify that as a commercial use and not as a residential use.
Or it could be village house.
I'm sorry?
It could be village house, the one that's already built on Village Road.
I'm not familiar with that.
I know very well. Village house would be straight residential. There are virtually no services. There's a card room, the trailer laser must come by five times a day, but there's no services. There's no medical, there's no housekeeping, there's no cafeteria. Very limited set of services. That's residential.
I think the solution to that problem is to call independent living, maybe the finer point on this is to say, independent living is residential, but it's not commercial.
Yeah.
Okay. But the other more intense levels of senior housing are. But just to be clear, our request doesn't reclassify senior housing from residential to commercial. That's already in there. Okay, that's already in there. The only thing we're asking about, asking to do with respect to senior housing is make it, not make it conditional to have it be a permitted use. That's it. We didn't reclassify it.
No, they're.
I just want everybody, everybody to be clear on it and in case there's any, so it's nuanced. The solution very well may be to call independent living residential.
Okay. So my second aspect of my answer to you is, this is a proposal that's been put forward to you. And we fully anticipate that you would look at this proposal and suggest modifications. We would never anticipate that you would say, okay, great, or no. It would be some level of discussion saying, I have a problem with the classification of these uses because then, in my opinion, it could be all residential. Although we may differ on that, what we classify that specific level or type of use to be, whether it's commercial or residential, let's clarify it.
Here's my understanding of what our purpose is here tonight. Someone can correct me if I'm wrong. As chair, we're here to do a straight vote on the whole of the application as a whole, not passed out. It's not a negotiation session. It's not for us to suggest otherwise. We're here to do a straight vote on whether we recommend that to the council or whether we do not recommend that to the council. So I'm not sure where the negotiation part or the suggestion part of that comes in.
It is my professional opinion that that is not what you're required to do. You can definitely do that. You can take a straight vote on what was presented to you, or you can suggest, here's a problem, here's an issue, like we did with the original PEC zoning classification, where there was tremendous discussion between this body and the applicant at that time, saying about specific uses and where they should be and how they should be, that we went through that process publicly. So that's what I had always anticipated, not that this was a straight up or down vote on what was presented to you.
Okay.
The third aspect that I would throw to you.
Joe, can you clarify, is that our role here tonight?
When the council referred this matter to the planning commission, it was under the assumption that it would be reviewing the applicant, the applicant's proposal as it was submitted.
And so no modifications, no potential modifications or discussion regarding the application.
That's what the charge was from the council to the.
Okay, that's very unusual. In such, in my 36 years of doing this throughout the state of Maryland, I can tell you that that's very unusual. But in these discussions, there are always, it's a discussion. It's not, okay, take it or leave it.
And on the Baltimore City Planning Commission that you, not to bring that into it, that you chair.
Yeah.
Is that, I mean.
No.
You don't chair it? I thought you were on.
No, I chair it.
Oh, you chair. Okay.
Yeah.
So is it an up or down?
No.
Okay.
No, I mean, the purpose of, ideally of this body is to say, okay, we have a problem with this. Here's what we would recommend. If we say, no way, say, okay. If we say, okay, that's acceptable, then, okay, let's move on to the next point.
Okay.
And let's move on to the next point. It's just not my experience. And the third and final aspect to address your question is, Nexion's not going anywhere. Alderson Loop is not going anywhere. Building G is not going anywhere. The applicant has said that they would convert building F and the auditorium to non-residential uses with specific elements of those. And you hold a hammer on whether or not you approve that at the preliminary, at the conceptual plan and at the preliminary plan level. So we make application, you have entirely within your power to say, no, we're not accepting that because we believe that that's a residential use and we want more non-residential uses. And you promised us, or you talked to us about having building F and the auditorium as non-residential, and that was the 71,000 square feet, which made up so much acreage and so on. That's what we're basing it on.
Okay.
And to further stipulate, I mean, on those particular buildings, on F and the dining hall and the auditorium, Sean and Roger and I and Dave have already talked about the fact that we need to further clarify that those won't be housing issues, including, okay, independent, independent living, then that's something we can, we can talk about to make sure that that commercial core, commercial, institutional, light industrial, community, you know, whatever it is, that core is preserved on the historic campus.
I would also say that throughout our discussions and throughout the alternatives that we've done since the PEC preliminary plan was approved, we have looked at parcels A and B predominantly for non-residential uses and for residential uses as an alternative. I don't think there's anything that's prohibiting the applicant from continuing to pursue those, although the pursuit has been very, very dry. Who knows what would happen if somebody was to say, okay, now there's this many more additional residences in this neighborhood. Now I'll do something about it, but with, so.
If I may please, too, on the auditorium and dining hall, we're still a long ways away from having something that works. Not only that works, but that comports with the town's desires for what happens downtown, the apple butter factory and new parking arrangements and everything else. There are a set of ideas that we think are very exciting, culinary and event and some other things. But we're not sure yet what else the town wants to do and what uses would be compatible at that location a while from the center of town rather than being in the center of town. So that, too, is speculative. It's our heartfelt desire to turn that into a really vibrant asset for everybody in the community, for all sorts of uses, including for-profit and community and nonprofit and artistic and performing arts and all the other things, which we aren't to yet. We will get to there. But that, too, is an ongoing conversation. We don't, we don't have a successful engagement yet. We just have ideas. And so we're just looking now for the framework in which that conceptual plan can be developed.
Okay. Thanks. Anything else from anyone else on that particular issue?
I have one more question. So the three options that you had provided, one of them was to look at other, you know, to look at Sykesville's zoning and residential zoning was included in that portion of the text. Also said that it was the least preferable option. Why was it the least preferable option in comparison to the other? It was a little surprising to me. I thought that starting from scratch would have been the least desirable option, but that wasn't what it said. So I was just curious.
So the primary reason is all of the other modifications that would need to take place in order to effectuate a straight R-7500 and BG zoning.
Okay.
That there would definitely need to be modifications to those ordinances based on uses identified in the BG, for example, and expanding those uses and so on and so forth, that once you change those, those are applicable throughout the town, not just to Warfield. The beauty of the PEC is it's strictly limited to two properties. And it's entirely up to the planning commission and the mayor and council as to whether or not that's ever expanded beyond those two parcels. Once you change the R-7500 and BG, they're applicable throughout the town.
Thanks.
Thanks, Sean. Okay. Question five, does the act's property owner know the proposed changes? Yes, they do, as does the contract purchaser for that property. What are the, question six, what are the conditions on any grants or tax credits that have been obtained by or for the Warfield project from the state? So just to recap some context real quick, what we're, the problem we're trying to solve for is this $31 million shortfall, probably greater than that, given COVID now, Ukraine, and what's going on with the economy. You see the capital stack. We've been through it many times. We've amassed in tax credits $35 million net of transactional costs, around 30. That would be supplemented with state grants, tax-exempt bond financing, which is, you know, sitting down there at the bottom is another bullet point, but it's a pretty substantial part of this when paired with the federal low-income housing tax credits and then other, you know, minor DHCD programs that kind of nibble around the edges. And the key to remember here is, not only from our perspective, but from the perspective of the people doling out the programmatic resources, the whole project has to, has to work. And it, the individual tax credits and grants and whatnot are reliant upon one another as a package. To answer the question a little bit more directly, there are, with each of these programs, certainly requirements. There are requirements that happen when you get the award. There are requirements at closing of financing. There are requirements during construction and final turnover. And then there are, particularly for federal housing tax credits, there are requirements that go on for 15 years in the operation. I don't think that's what you guys were really asking about.
No, actually, can I, I think it was my question, actually. So if I can just elaborate on what I'd like to know.
Sure, yeah, yeah.
As I understand it, from the answer, which is referred to another part of another document, the federal historic, sorry, yeah, the federal low-income housing tax credit is the only one of those credits which actually requires the developer to introduce workforce housing into the development. Am I right in that?
In a strict sense, yes, but with the, let me go to, head to, let me see if I got the right one. Hold on. There are other documents that play into this, and you'll have to bear with me. Okay, well, there it is. Okay, my apologies. So the first thing to note about the catalytic tax credit, although it's not a hard requirement, and there are not specific percentages, strict percentages like there are with Lytec. The enabling legislation did talk about, and the scoring process therefore had to involve giving preference to projects that had affordable housing. That was an amendment that was added by somebody from Montgomery County that we had nothing to do with. The application, which has been provided to the town, talks about the process we're going through. And there was a lead-up to, it wasn't like that application showed up on their doorstep overnight. These discussions have been happening for years. And in the buildup, when we were writing this legislation with Senator Hester and getting it approved. So that played into it. I mean, the full expectation is that there will be a housing project here. The comment, the question that we get from DHCD and have gotten for three years is, are you committed to doing housing? Are you committing to, to follow the disposition and development agreement? Are you committed to following through with the recommendations of the state study on historic campuses? And the answer has been yes.
Okay, so and let me clarify this again so that everybody's clear about this. The tax credits that are enumerated down here on page three of this document.
Do you want to go back?
Catalytic revitalization, federal low-income, federal historic, just so that everybody's on the same page here. And the numbers are there and the additions there. There's one of those which relates specifically, that you have to spend a certain amount of that tax credit. There's one of those which relates specifically that you have to spend a certain amount of that tax credit, or at least allocate.
It's not, it's, it's rough, it's roughly ninety percent of your, of your building area has to be on.
Right, so that's roughly ninety percent of thirteen and a half million. That relates to the historic buildings. Putting housing in the historic buildings. Is that true of all of the other tax credits, that they relate only to the historic buildings and the housing requirements of the historic buildings? There's nothing about the rest of the other parcels? It's, it's really parcel D and parcel.
Well, and the rest, the other part, no, this had, this specifically has to do with parcel D. Absolutely. And strictly speaking, the only thing here that's a housing tax credit is Lytec. But, I don't know if anybody saw, uh, saw the movie, I forget the name of it now, where they put the dominoes up and they're talking about tranches of, okay, you pull one of these out, it all kind of falls apart.
I absolutely understand.
Okay, and I just, I just.
I, I absolutely understand. And I, I have no problem with the idea of housing in historic, it, it's made sense to me for a long time, although that's not going to be my decision at the end of the day. It wouldn't bother me if, if in a further application for zoning amendments, bearing in mind you don't necessarily want a full decision tonight, that a hundred percent of that particular parcel became housing, if that was the only way to do it commercially. I just don't, I want to make sure that this is not necessarily linked to the rest of the application. In other words, if you don't get five hundred and eighty-nine houses in total, this goes away because no other project is possible.
Right.
Because I've seen that said twice in, at least twice in these documentations that I've got.
What's, what, what that's, this particular capital stack, just to be clear, and I, and I know I've, I've, I've said it before, but well, if it hasn't been clear, I'm sorry. This, this capital, these tax credits relate to the historic buildings.
So, it's strictly parcel D?
It's strictly parcel D. Now, there are other aspects that we're going to discuss tonight. Okay, that, I mean, we have talked about consistency with the disposition and development agreement. We have talked about, you know, the fact that we've got, I don't know how much it is now, we're putting it out for pricing, but it's probably going to be close seven, between seven and ten million dollars in infrastructure that still has to be funded. Okay? The other density for, for us, if we're parsing it, okay, which is what I, I think I hear happening, we're trying to make a separation.
I'm not trying to make a separation at all. I, I'm not here to negotiate.
No, no, and I'm not, I'm not suggesting you are, Chair, yeah.
What, what we're trying to do here is to establish a way forward.
Right.
Okay? I, I specifically came here tonight with, with the intention, if possible, to get a vote. But if that's not possible, then we can move on and go to Plan B, whatever Plan B might be. But I'm not sure that it's our place at this particular point to negotiate with people here what is and what is not possible.
You know, as Sean said, what we would hope is that there are particular points that you want us to come back and address. Give us the opportunity to do that.
Well, I think that's fair.
And we're, and we're, and we're listening and, and we can come back and, and try to address those things at a, at a future meeting.
Good.
Okay.
Well, I would encourage my fellow commission members that if they have any ideas or suggestions that might be appropriate at this particular point, that this might be the time to, to introduce them.
And we're taking.
As suggestions, we're not going to negotiate.
No, we're, we're taking, we're taking notes, but like we did last time, we'll send the town manager a list of questions as we understand them. And then we sent seven over, we got another twelve back, and that's fine. That's, as you let this marinate and you review the materials, we, we understand. So, to move on, actually, it's, it's interesting because what does cover the whole project that often gets, really, really hasn't gotten enough discussion, but it certainly has been at the top of our discussions with the state, is the disposition and development agreement from two thousand and two. And that is certainly something that I can see everybody having more questions about. But, a couple of quotes from that agreement, which governed the transfer of the property from the state to the town in two thousand and two. "The state and town acknowledged that existing conditions regarding the insufficiency of Carroll County public water supply at the time of execution of this agreement inhibit the inclusion of high-density residential development into the plans of the project. In the event that Carroll County public water supply becomes sufficient, which it, it has, to sustain high-density residential development, the town should investigate the feasibility of incorporating residential development into its plans for the project, including absorption, marketability, highest and best use of the land, available of that, availability of adequate infrastructure facilities and public services, and compatibility with the project as then constituted." It also says that if residential development is deemed feasible, then the town shall employ reasonable efforts to incorporate residential options. This is the key, is part of the reason the state's willing to dedicate programmatic resources, it's right in the agreement, it says that they'll dedicate programmatic resources, although considerate, upon demonstration to town, its intent to incorporate and implement smart growth ideals. So, we have this agreement that runs with the property that we all really, really need to understand. And I don't think there's been nearly enough discussion about it. But that has guided a lot of what we've done in terms of requirements in, in forming this project. There was also a study that was done in two thousand, started in two thousand and eighteen and completed in two thousand and twenty that gave, advancing the preservation and reuse of Maryland's historic complexes. Warfield was a case study. And we've been able to really, we're really attacking two, two primary ways to move the deal forward. The first thing that they said is establish a catalytic tax credit. And nobody was going to do it for us and Senator Hester worked with us on it and we got that done. Wonderful. But the other thing that the study realized was that land use changes that fall in line with the market and help generate cash flow to help pay for, partially pay for preservation, but also infrastructure, needs to happen. And so, this is what has been our guiding principles from the state. When you ask, so when you ask what the requirements are, the, this is what we've been working with for several years now. So, any, any questions?
I, I have a couple of questions.
Yep.
So, as part of the comp plan, the comp plan describes an urban design workshop. It also acknowledges the need for potential changes over at Warfield. But it, and it goes on to say that there needs to be a collaboration between the town and the developer in order to make that possible. Personally, it's my personal opinion in reference to this, I feel like there's a missed opportunity here with the collaboration piece. It would have been helpful to know kind of what the plans were and how much was being tied to housing as part of the, the capital stack that was being put together. That would have been helpful. Comp plan goes on to talk about mixed use and creation of a hybrid form-based zoning approach. And it creates a, where there's a balance of a small-town feel. And we, we've talked around it quite a bit tonight, but I think the issue is, is the hundreds of homes that are being looked at to come in and it'd be the most dense location in all of our town. It doesn't feel like the same town. So, it's, it's, how do we overcome that, right? That's, that's the big question that I think a lot of people want to know. And so, I asked the question in the last planning commission of what else did you come up with? What were the other alternatives that were out there? And, you know, we haven't got to that question yet. But the, the answer was a methodology of how you did it, right? Not necessarily the context behind why. And I'm really interested in, like, if, if we were to go down this path that Phil suggested before, which we're not here to do today, but I think the council, and I'm speaking on my own personal opinion, but I serve on the council, is, I think what I would want to see is, well, where's the middle ground, right? Like, that's, and the comp plan talks about the need to have, to have balance across things. And right now, you know, who knows what could happen? Like, I get that it's a concept plan, right? That we've seen so far as part of all these processes. But, but we've also heard you loud and clear that there's not commercial, that, you know, I mean, we've, I've heard you, I don't know how many times you've said it, but you've said it a bunch of times. I've been very impressed with the work that you've done with the state. I just think it was a missed opportunity with the town, right? That I think we should have been, not necessarily there, but maybe we should have been. I don't know, but it's.
May I, may I address that?
Absolutely.
I mean, there, so, along the way, and, and, you know, one of the, one of the issues that we, we face, we all face is that, so you've had a, you've had a change in administrations, for one thing. We, we're dealing with one mayor before and now another, and things were very different. But we also, over the course, Roger, since you've been involved in this, how many town managers? And the, the point is that we have, we have sat down and, and, and maybe, maybe not in the way that some people would like, but, but we have sat down and tried to be clear about what our issues are and what needs to happen here. And it was always known from the day that I got involved, which has been over five years ago now, that this was never going to happen with, without substantial state support and, and federal support. It was just always known and, and the state of the market was always known too, but these things, these things, for some reason, you know, never, never, never entered the discussion the way that we wanted to. But we, we have tried. And I'm not pointing fingers at anybody, but what I'm, what I am saying is we have had the discussions with multiple people at the town level. And we need to be able to have those discussions with elected officials and staff and to be able to, you know, on one hand, and, and, and to be able to have them come to meetings and things like that. And there were meetings at MHD.
But that's, that's not, that's not what, that's not the relevant portion of the comprehensive plan. That's, that's not what Jeremiah, as I understand it, is referring to at all. And I'm not really sure why that's coming into play.
If I can, real quickly, there's a really important difference between zoning and design. There is definitely a design process that needs to happen.
Sure.
We spent, I can't remember how many meetings. I know it was at least six versions of our pattern book, which at the end of the day is a form-based code. If you look at the way the pattern book was, was created, it was collaborative with, with the Historic District Commission and the Planning Commission. And it included a variety of things that the town was looking for and that the applicant was looking for. That's design. That follows zoning, okay? We, we don't, we, we can't get zoning into, and say, okay, let's go build it. It's just not going to happen. At the end of the day, the planning commission, if the ordinance is adopted in its current form or in some variation of its form, then that's just this, okay, now go develop your plans, bring it before the planning commission. Let's have that design discussion. Let's evaluate what's important in the, in the pattern book. It's, it's a, unfortunately, it's a linear process. Not, you know, not, it's not, it's just not possible to group it all into one.
My, my response to that, though, is that we have to anticipate what's going to happen next. And, and take into account, does this, as it's currently presented to us, fall in alignment with what we're trying to do with our comprehensive plan? That's one piece of it, right? And then, there's some other pieces to it, but I, I won't get into that because we don't even, we don't need to worry about that here. And so, with, with that said, I'll be honest, for me personally, it's hard, hard to bifurcate the two because I'm, I'm anticipating what some of the options are, whether we change the uses or whether we change the density requirement for the potential of residential, so.
I, I can literally tell you that, I mean, again, this is different from what you believe your directive to be. But if you tell me, if you were to say to me that, you know, the, the six-point-five homes per acre is just too dense. And we say, okay, your R seventy-five hundred permits five-point-eight homes per acre, isn't that acceptable? Then we, we go and look at it like that. That's the kind of discussion that happens during the crafting of an ordinance, which is what happened when we crafted the original PEC. That starts to address some of the concerns that you may have. But there really is, and, and I appreciate a hundred percent your position, that it would be great to have all the answers right now. But unfortunately, you cannot condition zoning. In Maryland, you can't, there's no such thing as contract zoning. Zoning is zoning, zoning. And you get through the zoning process, then you go through the planning and approval process. And you hold all the cards in the planning and approval process. That's the reality of it.
Well, if I could just make a reference, one quick clarification on, on that, that statement. That is true. Once the, once the zone is passed, you all control what happens within that zone. However, if the zone allows for something, because you made a comment earlier that if the dining hall, if we didn't like what you all proposed about the dining hall, if this is, or the ordinance passes, we could just say, well, no, we don't want that. We want something different. However, if the zone allows it, they don't have the ability to say no to you.
Actually, I would disagree with you, I'm sorry. I would disagree with you.
So, wait, wait, just, just to clarify.
Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, no, it's okay. It's, if every attempt was made to put commercial, some sort of commercial in the dining hall, and a decision was made by the owners that, that doesn't, that's not going to work from a marketing standpoint or whatever, and that the only thing that will is residential. And the amount of residential was still allowed within that zone, you're saying the planning commission could then just say, we don't want residential there.
Your decisions, the planning commissions, your, your guiding principle is your decisions cannot be arbitrary or capricious. That's the standard by which you are held.
But if the zone allows it, if the zone allows it, isn't it arbitrary for them to say no?
No, not at all. Because the zone, the zoning ordinance also says that it's going to be mixed use. And if you're going to have a variety of uses in, in the, in the zone.
To a certain percentage.
To a certain percentage.
To a certain percentage of land area.
Yeah, but here's, here's the problem with that. Five percent doesn't allow any planning commission very much wiggle room on anything.
Okay, so, what is the percentage?
Well, that's not for me to say.
Well, so what, just real quick.
I'm not proposing.
Just, just one thing that we did.
My proposal at this particular point.
One thing, one thing that we did do is, one of the response letters that you'll see, that we came back to one of Joe's points. And he said, this doesn't make sense. You're already above that, you know, above the five percent. So, we said, okay, fine, make it eight and a half percent. I mean, that was a fair point. So, we said, make it eight and a half percent minimum for, you know, non-residential. Now, if we want to, if we want to further parse what non-residential means, now would be the appropriate time to fix that if there's, if there's a, if there's a problem with it.
It seems to me you're trying to do two different things.
Yes.
And, and they, they will not fit together tonight. They will not fit together.
Well, we don't, again, we don't think we're getting it all done. This is, how, it took years.
You can't, you can't get part of it done tonight. You, it's either one thing or go away and come back with something different. I mean, it's not, it's not at all tonight for us to propose. Ted, you were going to say something. Sorry, sorry.
I, I completely agree. I think that the only, the, the way we can approach this is, is, you know, as, as a planning commission, we're really not in a position to, I, I guess, declare that, you know, your proposal is correct or incorrect. I think our task is really strictly to, we think it's viable to recommend it for the council to consider. So, all of the stuff that we're hearing and everything that's being presented is kind of just more fluff on top of everything we've already learned and everything we've already heard and discussed at several meetings now. So, I'm not really sure what the purpose is tonight.
Yeah, I don't, either, because, I mean, it's just not my history in doing this. I mean, I'm currently going through the exact same thing in Elkton, Maryland, where we presented an ordinance to the mayor and council. They accepted the ordinance, gave it to the planning commission for their review and recommendation. It wasn't a review and recommendation on exactly what you were submitted. It was a review and recommendation. They hold a public hearing, they go through discussions, I say negotiations, we say compromises. I don't care what terminology we use, but it's a back-and-forth saying, okay, this is too high, let's lower that. Okay, you know, that makes sense.
I understand that, but that's, that's not what we were charged to do.
That's not at all. And so, my question is, why are we even answering any questions?
I don't know, because I didn't ask for the meeting. I didn't ask for the meeting. I mean, I, obviously, there's a misunderstanding somewhere at a much higher level than this about the purpose of why we're here, because we're here to consider your application holistically, as it is, and vote whether, as a planning commission, we can recommend that application to the council or not.
What is typically, again, my experience is similar to Sean's, where the, the planning commission hears it, it goes back up and it may say, look, you know, we recommend the, it would be, we would approve it with these changes. I mean, it's a, you know, we, we heard all the evidence, we, the, the applicant answered questions, came back a few times, we heard it three times, been through it with staff. questions, came back a few times, we heard it three times, been through it with staff, we, we would have recommended with these changes, or we would not recommend it even with these changes, but, but it's, I don't understand there, I, I don't.
There's anything in the municipal land use law in the state of Maryland that prohibits you from having a discussion with an applicant on a zoning text amendment to make modifications to that that you find acceptable?
Or recommendations for modifications.
And then say, okay, and with those modifications, we would recommend approval to the mayor and council of this. Without those modifications, we don't.
Okay.
I, I, I don't think there's anything, and Dave Baursocks, as a land use attorney, is, and, or is there any restriction on the Planning Commission's ability to make modifications to a zoning code that they've been asked to review and make a recommendation?
There's nothing in, in the energy to.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Just to clarify, and I think one of the reasons why this was forwarded to Planning Commission in the format it was, was simply because there was an attempt prior to the applicant, or the applicant's submittal being forwarded to Planning Commission, an evaluation was done by staff to figure out whether or not this was something that was workable. And it was at least our determination, and council agreed, that modifications needed to be made to it so that it could be looked at and evaluated and figured out whether or not there are tweaks that need to be made. But this was such a drastic step that there was too many little pieces that were going to have to go, be gone through and figured out. So when that request was not accepted by the applicant, they wanted to get all of the feedback at once instead of, you know, maybe making some modifications before it ever went to Planning Commission, it was determined by the council to make that request of Planning Commission. Just look at it on its face and tell us whether or not you think this is a good idea or not.
Okay.
For my addification, Mr. Chairman. Am I understanding you to say that the commission believes that you're limited to an up or down? Or are you saying that some other entity, council, whatever it is, is limiting your review of this?
My understanding, Steve, correct me if I'm wrong, please, okay? Because you've been around longer than I have, is that you have submitted a zoning text amendment application that you want it to go through a process which includes, first of all, the Planning Commission. That the remit from the mayor and town council, and again, correct me if I'm wrong, is that we have a, a straight look at this and we make a straight vote up and down on your application as it stands, that we're not a negotiating body, it's not our place to be making suggestions to you at this particular meeting, at this particular stage.
So.
That's my understanding of your challenge. If anyone wants to correct me about that, then I'll be only too happy to, to hear an alternative, but that's, that's my understanding of our charge today.
All right, man, forgive me for my characterization. So it's your impression that your hands are tied by one mayor and council?
Well, I think we're having discussions here today is what we're doing, so, so the applicant can bring out their reasons why they have asked for this, and we can ask further questions on why this is in front of us. And to come up with a conclusion, I'll, I'll tell you personally, I don't like a lot of things about this. This, this eviscerates what a planned employment, the PEC zoning is. It takes employment out of PEC. It makes it a potential to be up to 5% commercial and 95% residential use. It does give the applicant the flexibility to do a lot of different uses in here, but what we've heard from the applicant over time is that there aren't any commercial uses out there for the space, which then puts in my mind, and I'm assuming the rest of these guys' minds, that it's going to be 95% residential. And further to that, if a building remains vacant because there isn't a commercial use, then we've got a vacant building and 95% landmass residential. And that's a problem under a PEC. Perhaps another action to take was one of the other two ways to come forward, instead of completely changing the language in a PEC zoning text amendment.
My, my question was not so much about what would have been a different or maybe more preferred method. I'm just asking to clarify, you're saying your role here tonight, you understand, to be the limitation from the mayor and council. That, that's all.
Because what Steve just said is different, I think, than what, what I, I heard you say.
Yeah, and I mean, his points are valid, but they weren't, and, and forgive me, they weren't what my question was.
It's, it's not my understanding that it's our role to make recommendations about changes in this application to the mayor and town council.
So if I can.
That's, that's not my, of why we're here tonight.
And I second that opinion wholeheartedly.
And there's nothing that we're going to say or do that's going to change that, I would assume. So does it make sense under that to, and I'm speaking as a attorney, so, off the cuff, is, does it make sense to?
Do we want to recess for a minute and have a discussion?
Discussion, so that we go back to the mayor and council and say, we would, we didn't anticipate that this was going to be brought to the Planning Commission with a up or down vote on what was submitted. We anticipated that this was going to be a discussion and that there is going to be, I'm sorry?
I see you're saying a dungeon.
Sorry?
This approach is unconventional.
Yeah, it's, I mean, we were.
We, we, I, I'm at a loss here, because I don't know what we've done for the past three meetings, but have a discussion.
But you're saying that you're not going to make, you're, you're, you're voting on this thumbs up or thumbs down on what was submitted, period?
I, I'm not voting on anything other than what's thumbs up or thumbs down on this if we have a vote tonight, because I'm not prepared to. It, it's not necessarily my personal role. You guys are pretty smart guys, and you, you know what you can do with this property, what you can't do with the property, and if you thought there was going to be some resistance, perhaps you would have come a little stronger on some commercial side. My thought.
So again, I'm going to ask you, do you believe that you can make any modifications to what we presented to you, or you have?
If we go through our questions and answers and our process like we did before, I think it's, like, like we did years ago when we were coming up with the PEC plan and before we had closed on the property, is, is it a process that follows that, or is it, as the chairman says, that it's strictly, I think what Dave is asking, are you allowed, or, or, is your?
If you wanted to come to the Planning Commission and ask for guidance about what we might have as ideas for a, for, for a proposal that you would then come up with, that's, that's something that could have happened way back down the line. It's not my understanding of where we are.
I don't think that's what, I think.
That's not the law. That's not what's in your code. Your code specifically offers this opportunity, which is what we were following.
Okay.
And that's why I'm kind of.
Which is the same.
Well, again, just to clarify, doesn't the, doesn't the code say the Planning Commission shall make report and recommendation to council?
Yeah, and that's, I think that's different than what I'm hearing the, from the chairman.
It's a report based on the text amendment that's been submitted and a recommendation based on the text amendment that's been submitted.
It does not allow us the opportunity to come before the Planning Commission without first going to the mayor and council and talking about a zoning text amendment in a hypothetical situation, gathering your responses, then going back in and crafting something and coming back again in a formal process to the town through the mayor and town council. The way the code is written, is you introduce a zoning text amendment to the mayor and town council, it's deferred to the Planning Commission. If you want to take a strict interpretation of what the actual words say and say, the only thing that you can do is write a report and give a recommendation on what exactly, it doesn't say on only what was submitted to you, it just says a report and recommendation. That's all it says. And that's why, I, I mean, there's, to me, that's as ambiguous as it says, you can have questions, you can make suggestions, it can be amended from what was originally introduced to you. Under the municipal land use law, there's nothing prohibiting that. It's basically.
Well, it's commonplace that you.
Very common experience. And that's why I've never experienced this.
Okay.
I mean, in all fairness, you just said that you changed the density from 5% to 8.5%. That was a change that's come through this process. And there were other changes, and we've been pretty clear in reference to, you know, there's a lot of questions about the density as it pertains to going from two, you know, units per acre to six and a half units. I mean, we have said that, you could do something with that. You could come back to the Planning Commission and say, hey, you know, we've heard the, we've heard you've pushed back in reference to this particular matter, and here's what we're, we can do. And if the Planning Commission said, hey, you know, we've got this text amendment, and this is our recommendation, and we've had good conversation with the applicant, I think the council would listen to that recommendation, because we respect the people that are here.
Would you accept that?
Well, it's not a question of whether I would accept it or not.
As the chair, it is.
Well, as the, as the chair, I, I would seek guidance from the mayor and town council about what it is that, that we're here for.
Okay, because what I was, what I just heard is, we, we can do that, but you're not going to take this into consideration. You're going to take into consideration only what was presented to you.
Jeremiah, I, 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 I think what we're saying is, I, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with that process, and I think I largely agree with what Mr. Enzlo is, and I do, is, it's, it's a similar process that we went through before several years back. But what I'm hearing from the chairman is that this is very binary, and there's, it's, it's up or down, and none of this input can be taken in, and that is, that, that's what we're getting, we're getting hung up on here, because that is not a common, that's not something I've encountered before. I, I think none of us.
Let me ask you another way, with, with what you have discussed and what you've heard today, what changes would you make?
Well, we haven't even gotten through, you know, been able to get through, you know.
And I should, I should actually take that back for the past few weeks, few meetings, excuse me.
Personally, we would definitely change the land use percentages. We would lower the residential land use percentage that would be permitted to create a maximum which is below what we currently propose.
But we need to be able to have those discussions, we need to have those discussions, just like we're willing to.
You know, I would say, and we would increase the non-residential accordingly, and then we would increase the open space requirement. So it's not, and it would never have been 95% residential. It would have been.
It's allowable, it's possible.
No, with the open space requirement, you can never have 95% of the land use, the land designated in use for residential, period.
So why does that number even appear in the, in the text as 95% instead of adding the open space as a?
It doesn't appear as 95%. It was established at 75%.
Okay.
And we admitted, we had made a mistake, a mathematical mistake. It was 75% up to seven, up to 75% residential, 25% open space requirement, and 5%, well, that equals 105.
Yeah, right.
Okay, so we came back and we admitted, yes, I'm, I'm not good at math, that's why I'm a landscape architect.
And not an engineer.
And, and said, okay, 70%, up to 70. If you're saying 70% is too much, and we, we recognize that based on this particular parcel, it is, we would modify those. We would talk about the density, and we recognize where you are in terms of the density. We had put a number out there based on plans that we had developed. If you say, no, that's just too much, well, what happens if we were to go R7500, that's the point of this.
So let's, let's move ahead with it then. Let's, let's put it this way. If, if we were to have a vote tonight on the proposal as it stands, it is my suspicion, and I haven't had the vote, I'm probably not going to have the votes tonight, that it probably would not get a recommendation as it stands right now.
I think that Aunt Vegas would take odds on that.
Now, that being said, I think it might be useful, it might be useful at this particular point, if we were to, let's just say, articulate the objections that we have to it, that you might then go away and come back with a, with a modified plan that perhaps might be more acceptable.
That would be great.
Does that seem like a reasonable idea?
Well, I, I think we have a lot of information to.
Yeah, I mean, it probably makes sense, I mean, we can scroll through all the questions and answers.
Let us continue with this, we'll continue with the questions, we will ask for suggestions for changes, and then we will adjourn without a vote tonight.
Now, my, my question, my question is, as far as timing goes tonight, if we had, hit up against, what time is it? It's eight, so how late were you expecting to go?
There isn't a particular plan for that. Joe, is, is this a reasonable approach, or, or are we requiring?
Yeah.
Then we'll move ahead and do that.
And if, if we get to a point where.
Get to a point where it's going too long.
Everybody says that we can pick up where we left off next time, if that's okay?
Let's move on.
Perfect, thank you.
You, you don't, I don't, I'm not sure you really need to read through what you've already written. Yeah, I, I think that you can address it in a, in a, a modified way, which gets us through it rather more.
Understood, and, and understood. Question number seven, workforce housing. What it is not, it's not public housing. It's, it's not section eight housing, not that there's anything the matter with section eight housing. Section eight vouchers follow the person, they follow the household, they don't follow the property. There are section eight properties, we're not proposing section eight housing here, and it's not community development block grant. As, interestingly enough, the comprehensive plan and Urban Land Institute's definition is the same. It's 60 to households that are making 60 to 120% of AMI. And, and the, just to be clear, the apartment project that we're talking about doing would be targeted at households making 60%. So middle income professionals, food service workers, healthcare workers, teachers, construction workers, workers, a lot of people who already live in the town, typically middle income. As you all know, Maryland law requires municipalities and counties to plan for workforce housing. You know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of confusion over the terms affordable housing, low income housing, very low income housing, workforce housing, but typically, really the overarching terminology here, that's the catchall, that covers all of those things, is affordable housing. And affordable housing's considered affordable if you're not spending any more than your income, 30% of your income on rent or mortgage payments plus utilities. Just some examples that were not included in the package of some DHCD finance projects, two of which are in Frederick and are historic, were historic preservation deals. I believe these were targeted at lower than 60%. Very nice projects. And then two new construction ones, one in Elickett City, Burgess Mill Station, and, which actually used to be a public housing project that they repurposed. They knocked down and, and did a li tech deal, and this project in Owings Mills. Again, new construction, and if you're interested in driving by any of these projects, we're happy to give addresses, help arrange a tour, particularly the ones in Frederick. Okay? Any questions about workforce housing? Okay. Okay, moving on to the questions that we received back from Joe. Question number one. You asked what proposals have been hindered or withdrawn with respect to conditional uses. Anybody we've talked to has had, has had an issue with the, they're concerned about the extra layer of having to go through the BZA. And it, it just detracts from the marketability.
Steve, can I, can I just stop you there? Because I, this is one of the issues that I have with, and I think it's one of the issues a lot of people have with it, so let's throw it out in the open. I remember sitting in here very, very late night, it was a midnight meeting, I think, establishing principal permitted and conditional uses. I looked today at the Carroll County conditional permitted, prohibited uses for what they call an employment campus center. They are considerably more prohibitive than our ordinance. None of the conditional uses that you want to change from is a prohibited use. It's simply a, an extra, if you like, addendum on a, a planning application which would go to the Planning Commission and then the BZA. It's done to ensure that good planning takes place and the town is protected from developers who simply want to make the quickest buck the quickest way. And I don't see, frankly, any merit in changing those conditional uses to principal permitted. It's one of the problems that I have with this application. You wanted to hear it, there it is.
So noted, so noted.
List of things to address in there.
You know, but we have, we have had specific discussions where this has come up with gas and convenience stores, hotel, and senior housing in particular. You asked about specific uses. We'll come back, we'll come back.
To zoning to something different from a planned employment center. That's, that's.
What I've also heard, though, is a lot of discussion about it influencing small town character. My question is this, what influences small town character more, or has a negative effect on it? A 600,000, 591,000 square feet of office at six stories with 181 units of residential that was already approved in 2014? Or residential, less, less intense residential uses, less intense going right, right down the line? The only question may be schools.
It's, it's, at this point, it seems we're being offered a choice of one or the other, and.
If I can, Phil, real quickly.
Go ahead, please.
My, my suggestion was, if you have an opportunity to look at that tool, I would suggest that you do so in order to address some of the planning and design issues. I would suggest that you do so in order to address some of the planning and design issues that you anticipate coming in the future. Do you have the right setbacks to the roads? Is it similar to what you were doing currently? All of those kinds of things, because.
Absolutely makes sense.
That's how the zoning is effectuated on all.
It makes sense, yeah, but I think that we're moving to a point now where the actual meat of our problems with this is nothing to do with that at all.
Density is an issue, we got to look at that.
Density is an issue, the fact that what you were proposing in the application that's before us tonight, that you don't want us to vote on because it's not going to be a good idea, is that the Planned Employment Center District language that we have in the zoning, the whole concept behind the thing which has been developed over years and years and years and in the town's comprehensive plan, simply doesn't fit with the size of the residential portion that you were proposing in this zoning text amendment. It becomes something entirely different. And I think that's the problem that I have with it, as far as I can tell. That seems to be the problem that many of my colleagues here have with it. And if we cannot get around that, then none of the planning tools are going to be relevant in the first place. It's kind of pointless to go down that road.
If it came in as one of the other two options that we discussed with the town manager, would that have made a difference?
Well, it would make a difference in terms of whether it can be done on a planning level, whether it's desirable or not, that's a different matter altogether. Right now, what you're asking for is a zoning text amendment, which will completely change the nature of the zone into something different.
Which I think, which I think Sean pointed out in part of the discussion that we had with the town manager, we didn't make the decision to do this in a vacuum and to go down this path. We did ask. Well, let me finish for us, please.
I want to clarify one point that's very important, that we decided that path before any changes had been proposed yet. It was a determination of what is the easiest path forward to get us started down this road? And it was, well, you should probably amend the PEC. We hadn't seen any proposed changes to the PEC district yet. There was none of that, none of that discussion had happened when that decision was made, just to be clear.
So, well, the question I have, then, knowing that, then what would you have suggested, Joe?
Start from scratch and create a new zone.
But that wasn't included in any of your correspondence with us prior to.
It's okay, I mean, it's an answer. I mean, that's fine.
I think I made it very clear in my correspondence that what you were asking was a significant ask to change the PEC. And if that wasn't communicated properly in those communications, then I apologize.
There doesn't, we get lots of miscommunication that goes on, and it's best that we have some grace about it and try to move on. So I hear you, and thank you for answering the question.
Can I communicate as well? The language that you are proposing, the density of the housing that you're proposing, the percentage of commercial, is, may well be a commercial decision, but it simply doesn't fit with what we have right now as a Planned Employment Center District. It doesn't fit, and I don't think as a responsible planning commission, we could, at any point, recommend to the town council, based on what we have as a language here in front of us right now, that we could accept what you're proposing without significant changes.
So, Mr. Chairman, is the concern that, is the concern that the PEC zone would, because it's going to be used some other place?
It's because it's going to be used some other way, that it's not going to be a mixture, a significant mixture of office, retail, recreation. It's completely different from what we have as a definition of a Planned Employment Center District.
But here's my question.
It's a change in zoning, it's not a zoning amendment.
So I guess my question is, though, is what's driving that concern? Aside from the fact that it is a, it's a significant change. But if I were in your shoes, I'd be concerned it's a significant change because it has an impact going throughout the town. Like Sean described with, if we went with option one, I believe it was, which would require amendments to R seven-five-hundred, and was it BG? And the PUD ordinance, you know, that's precisely what we were trying to avoid. But I think the discussion that we had, Joe, notwithstanding your, I hear your comment, and I understand it. But I do think we all understood that, look, this affects two properties, and it's a matter of, let's not let good process get in the way of a technicality. Whether you agree with that, I know you don't agree with that.
Well, I don't see how anyone could agree with it. It just doesn't make sense to me.
It would be, again, I would see it as a problem if it applied to, but PEC zoning was created just for one property.
Yeah, just, again, I'm thinking out loud here, but the reality is, is that Anarongo County has several mixed-use zones. They have mixed-use residential, which is predominantly residential with a mixture of small percentage requirement of non-residential, predominantly commercial. They have a mixed-use employment, which is focused on employment. They have a mixed-use transit. So they have a variety of different mixed-use zones. And maybe that's where we can think about going with. We're going to be making modifications to this and resubmitting it to you all for your review. Maybe one of the things we should do is think about the name of it.
So, a couple points here. So one, there is another property, it's about thirty acres right next to this property. And so theoretically, although there's a lot of topography issues with that particular parcel, it's another one hundred and eighty-plus homes that could be put on that site based on this. So it'd be one hundred and eighty plus the homes that you're throwing in. And again, it gets back to the small-town feel. And, you know, back to the original question of what is, what's better, right? There were, I don't know how many meetings, but there were lots of meetings a long time ago where this was determined to be what we think the small-town feel looks like. And now we've built a comp plan on top of it. And so now that we're thinking about this significant pivot, that's where the concern comes from.
And just to be clear, you know, going back a few years, not to be redundant about it.
Sure.
Because I prefer to forget about a lot of those meetings. Not the planning commission meetings, but a lot of the meetings that we had with the county and the town and the state when they were calling, you know, talking about calling the debt. And it was, it was a very complicated process. And, you know, when you have that sort of negativity in the room, being pointed at both the town and the purchaser slash applicant, and a lot of complicated relationships, I think it made people make some, maybe some bad decisions. One of the questions that we got from Chairman Inslo was, you bring us this market study, why aren't you proposing something consistent with the market study? We don't need to rehash what happened. I remember the chewing out that I got from a particular county commissioner that day when we talked about the market study. And I had been with the deal for three months, and I thought Roger was going to throw me out of the car on the way home. So it was, it was a.
It was a county commissioner.
And it was, so it was, that, we have that going. I understand your point on the adjacent property. We're not sure what's precisely happening there and what they're going to do with it. They do have some issues, and I agree with you. You have to take that into account with this. Okay.
I had a full head of hair, I mean, I had hair like yours when it started.
Never had hair like him.
So, trust me.
And that was just tonight.
So, tax credits for building F, part of the plan to see the senior apartments, F is not senior apartments, where we have that approved for an office, an office building. Full plans, site plan approval, all we have to do is pull permits if we had a user for it. The affordable, the housing project is restricted to A, B, C, L, W, and D, and E. Who asked the question number four about the, you don't have to answer, but I'm assuming I got the project right that we're talking about here? We have seen a fairly successful, to this point, commercial spec building up in Eldersburg, thirteen-thousand-seven-hundred-fifty-square-feet. I actually know the guy who bought that Walmart center and developed this. We worked on a retail project years ago. And it was, he had no land basis in that, and it's in the commercial core.
I get the difference. I think you can move beyond the difference.
Okay, good. I just want to make sure everybody understands. Sean, you want to talk about this a little bit? Here, I'll just pull this up.
Yeah, so I mean, one of the questions was, is when we were creating this, we were talking about the portion of the property had to be within thirteen-hundred-and-twenty feet. As part of the clarification is, does the whole property have to be within thirteen-hundred-and-twenty feet of Route thirty-two? Or does a portion of it? So, I mean, this shows you, outside of that red line in parcels D, that's outside thirteen-hundred-and-twenty linear feet from Route thirty-two. So it was basically to clarify that, that if any portion of the property is within thirteen-hundred-and-twenty feet of Route thirty-two right of way, then it's applicable.
Okay.
Excuse me.
Is that what it said?
That's what it said.
We all get on that? Okay.
That was the easiest answer of the night.
Please.
This is the, this is the easiest answer of the night, so. There are no other uses than we proposed in the zoning ordinance that are intense and completely included in what we submitted to you. Question eight, is making all the senior housing types listed the sole reason for changing that particular section? No, and the majority of the uses are not even senior housing. We've talked about that one. We're just trying to eliminate a layer of regulation and try to make the project more marketable. Question nine. The current PEC has a specific percentage of land uses. Proposed changes from the percentage of land uses from the applicant are substantial. Aside from commercial and retail, have any other non-residential uses been pursued? Government users, schools, the inner arts groups, hotel developers, operators, resort developers, restaurants, gas and convenience, and daycare providers. And we actually contend, we have been in discussions for about a month now with somebody looking at parcel A, but that is a kind of a hybrid retail use.
Question in reference to that question.
Yep.
If a developer came in and said, hey, I'm willing to take on one of the buildings, one of the dilapidated buildings. Have you pursued those sorts of deals?
Oh, yeah, absolutely, I've got a heartbeat. For a great price. I got another offer two weeks ago for a parcel I've got more than a half a million dollars in. They were willing to pay based on the assess code, they were in twenty-three thousand dollars.
Wow.
They paid in cash right away.
I mean, to answer your question of, anybody who comes in and looks at the single building is going to have the same issue we have, and we've cracked the code.
Yeah.
And that's been kind of the exercise we've been going through the past few years.
I just wanted to understand kind of your process, looking at it in a macro way or always or whatever. So thank you.
Yep. Why has the applicant's concept plan omitted any possible retail use? Again, we, particularly on A, B, C, and H, that plan's a static plan. I will make sure you guys have the updated link. You can play with the link and look at all the mixtures that we've considered.
It's on our website.
No, it's actually, it's not.
Well, it's not.
It's not, no.
And you'll see the majority of the scenarios for A and B are non-residential, the retail uses. And we've looked at all of them, so we've marketed all of them.
Steve, can I sort of start to wind us up? Because I'm not entirely sure that we're getting anywhere at this particular point in terms of advancing as to any kind of decision or. There's a paragraph here that I'd kind of like to get, and I'm really tired, so excuse me.
Yeah, that's okay.
And so I'll read it out for you. It says, "Both the town and the applicant have known for many years that significant state and federal funding over and above what was available through federal and state historic preservation tax credit programs would be necessary to make the project viable." "Now, it's apparent the applicant has accomplished what seemed virtually impossible four years ago, securing funding to solve the thirty-million-dollar problem, to revitalize all the historic structures in parcel D and jumpstart the Warfield project in general." And then there's a sentence which is kind of important. It says, "None of this will happen without approval of the proposed zoning amendment." Now, the proposed zoning amendment is what we have in front of us right now tonight. It doesn't say in that sentence that we're here to negotiate or that there is.
Okay, so let me clarify. A proposed zoning amendment that helps us get the density in parcel D, that we need to get those tax credits, and gets us the density and the velocity in the project, the absorption in the project, to pay for seven to ten million dollars of infrastructure investment that needs to happen. And so if.
That's a commercial decision which you guys can do the numbers on.
Yeah.
That's not what's before us tonight at all. What's before us is something hugely different. Proposed to us is in this sentence, "None of this will happen without the approval." And actually, it says it twice, there's another place that it says it as well. So I'm not entirely sure where the idea that we were coming here to negotiate something different came from, but it's not been our understanding and our impression. Now, I'm only too happy to adjourn this meeting and to continue down the road with a different understanding of where we're going with this project. But as our understanding was, it's this or it's not going to happen, because commercially it's not feasible.
Okay, but I just, what I just clarified, and you guys saw, there's a lot of correspondence that went back and forth. We're going to step in it every now and then, okay? And every time we see something in a piece of correspondence that comes to us, we didn't, you know, we're not trying to pick it apart, we're, and I'm not suggesting that you are.
I'm not at all.
I know you're not, and it says what it says. And so, but give me the opportunity to make the clarification. What I'm here to clarify is what we just talked about, which is, we would like a give-and-take discussion to talk, to figure out, okay, if this isn't, we have a starting point here. What, let's get to a point where we figure, okay, this could be approved with conditions or recommendations for changes, or however, you have to construct it, to be constructive on this side with us and to still maintain, feel like you're maintaining your charge with the town council. So we're here to talk about it.
Okay.
And it's important on that particular note to recognize, I think probably more of the intent was, that potential would not have been unlocked for what was proposed under the PEC. For the non-residential uses, which could have never, ever supported, financially supported, that level of investment.
The town has quite clearly stated that they're committed to work with, okay? But I'm not entirely sure that that work with process went in to this zoning text amendment request.
At this point, is there a way that we could resurrect that idea of, you know, explore that possibility of.
Creating a new district?
Yeah, what was the.
Hybrid-based zoning?
Yes, yes.
Or form-based.
Form-based, the hybrid is a combination of the form-based and your existing code.
Correct, correct. Hybrid-form-based code. Yes, and the way to do that is to make a recommendation to council that this particular application not be approved, and that they recommend, that you do recommend starting that process.
Or alternatively.
Or alternatively, creating a new district.
Or alternatively, recognizing that the whole purpose of the pattern book that is included in the approval process is to get to that form-based code.
It's kind of interesting. When we were putting this together, and I was talking to Sean about it a little bit, and I was saying, you know, and reviewing the comprehensive plan again, which I've read again twice in the past week, and all the talk about form-based code and remembering what that means, I've done things under form-based code in Arlington before. It's one of the only places that has it around here and has done it successfully in the Columbia Pike Corridor. And it was hard to figure out in the beginning, because it's a little bit different than, it's very different than Euclidean zoning.
And I don't know physically, and one of the things we're researching right now is whether or not it's actually permitted under Maryland law. Because I don't know of any example in Maryland where there is form-based code.
We're going to, we'll look in, yeah.
What about the urban, like, the urban design committee or planning or whatever? The group you were, you know, that we tossed the idea around? I mean, there has to be a forum where the two can get together, one representing the town and one representing, you know, Warfield. It just seems like we're, and we're not, this isn't what we do.
And again, I think that's what the recommendation back to council could very well be, is that, you know, maybe this doesn't work, or maybe there's too many tweaks and changes that have to happen with this particular application. Encourage council to make that other opportunity available to everybody.
And my only comment to that for you is to say to you, if, you can hire ten urban designers, okay? I've worked with all of them before. Great professional people. We sit in a room, we take out a base map, and at the end of the day, any plan is based on basically three things, okay? What does the site say, topographically, environmentally, so on and so forth? What do the regulations say? What's the zoning say? And what does the market say? Those are the three things that go into creating a master plan for any property. And without the regulations and a common agreement on what the market is, you're going to come out with ten different answers on an urban design solution.
To me, that's not somebody working collaboratively with you. That's somebody that's coming up with an idea and then presenting to you what you just did to us. So like, there's no middle ground we're finding here. I mean, that's the issue.
By the way, I think if you have zoning in place, then that takes out one of the variables. This is what you're permitted to do. Okay, under that scenario, what are you permitted to do? One person may say, hey, listen, I want to do more vertically-mixed-use kind of Main Street stuff, right? And then the other person can come in and say, but that's not marketable. It's just not marketable. How do we resolve that? If the one person says. says, I don't care whether it's marketable, I'm still proposing it.
Well, that's, that's kind of what got us where we, we are. And, and just, I, Mr. Chairman, I heard your points. There are two more questions to answer, and if we could, we'll, for the, for the next time we come in, we could have the discussion about the comp plan. Because I think it's really important, Jeremiah in particular, you've, you've brought it up, about consistency with the comp plan, and I think it's important in a public, in a public space to have that discussion about where we're coming from and where you all are coming from, very specifically about what the comp plan says. But we can defer that, if that's okay with you.
Well, it was always gonna be okay if you wanted to defer beyond the votes tonight. We were never gonna vote on it if you felt that there was something else that...
We didn't anticipate a vote tonight.
We certainly didn't, and...
We anticipated a continued discussion, get more questions, okay, maybe we can...
I mean, very much like every planning process, again, I've, you know, ninety percent of the planning processes that I think we've all been through have gone in how it went previously, despite maybe an outcome that we, that is not workable. Okay, so, real quick, question eleven, tax credits from both the CRTC and LIHTC programs specifically, what are all the possible housing applications under these programs other than fifty-five workforce housing? Again, we don't have a specific age, we don't have a specific age restriction in mind for this project. It's just purely workforce and multi-generational. You know, to, to refresh everybody's memory on what it, it looks like just real quickly, you know, the, we have some building additions up here in, in yellow. That won't be the actual color. It's just to emphasize where the connections are. And here's a quick street view. But we just see that as purely multi-generational. We, we think that the market is small enough here where, where it gives us broader exposure to the market, not restricting it. And we think there's demand for multi-generational workforce housing. And I think that we can make it appealing to people who are empty nesters as well by the fact that we're putting in elevators, they're bigger units, they have more character. So we're serving a broader market that way, by not restricting, restricting it. This, this question, number twelve, spoke to the studies. The RP RG study, if, if another briefing of the market, something a little bit more streamlined than we did before, is, is, is of interest, we're happy to accommodate that and bring the consultant back in. There's a lot of proprietary information in that study, and we, it really needs to be refined. There was a prior study that was done years ago as a requirement of the contract and of the planning commission that the town does have. The conclusions aren't that much, aren't that much different. And then all the fiscal and economic impact studies the town should have, and I think you got the most recent one in the past month or so.
We do.
Okay, so...
Can I clarify that? So, in the, one of the memos back, it said that there was backup data for the post-COVID financial impact report. Did we get that?
I did.
You did?
I got that on the...
Okay.
It's been, it's been within the past couple of weeks.
Okay.
So, what, what I think we can do is maybe next time, come in and just talk, maybe the charge, what I would propose is come in and talk about consistency with the comp plan and really get behind that a little bit.
I, I would make an alternative suggestion. I don't think that this zoning text amendment, as it's proposed, is going to gain enough traction in the planning commission to pass as a recommendation. Because it's, two reasons from, from a purely personal point of view, okay? One is that it's, it's, you're asking too much of us in terms of the density of housing. It's just too significant to change, to fit with the language of the, of the current zoning that we have. So if we're discussing that, we're continuing to discuss that, it's just, it just becomes circular because I don't think we're going to get past it at this particular point. So what you need to come back with, if you, if we're gonna continue with a discussion about a zoning text amendment rather than a complete change of use, is you come back with something different.
Yep.
Okay? And if you come back with something different, then maybe we have something different to discuss.
Now, can I ask you, would you like us to present that to you at your next planning kit, at your regular planning commission meeting in April, and then schedule a follow-up discussion for the, for the May meeting, or?
It would seem to me, it would seem to me that the planning commission is the starting point for that particular discussion, if it's gonna be a discussion.
May I make a, may I ask a question here, just, just to, further to this? Does, if we don't take a vote tonight, are they coming back to us or they have to go back to council?
For, for what, I guess, is, would be the question.
Excuse me?
I said, for, for what, I guess, would be the question. Is it amendments to the current proposal that's already been submitted?
Well, we've already talked, we've talked about...
Or is it a brand-new submission?
Well, I think we're, no, no, I think we're talking, we're, we're talking about what's already been submitted, and we're talking about gathering...
Altering what's been submitted.
And, and, yeah. And, and if, if there's any specific guidance that, we don't have to do it here, but if there's any specific guidance on the residential that's, that you're not gonna, you know...
Not specific guidance on the residential, but I would suggest strongly to retract the statement about this project will not go forward if these conditions or whatever are not meant, that Phil brought up earlier.
I think I've, I think I've clarified.
It's actually, it's, it's twice in the literature that I've...
Okay, I understand. And if, if I didn't clarify well enough here, then we will write you a letter.
Very good. Okay.
May I make a suggestion?
Please do.
This is intended in a spirit of collaboration.
Indeed.
If there's going to be some referral, or whether it's mayor and council or within you all, it may be best at this point that we refrain from making specific references to form-based code models or any other type of specific. Those all, those varieties have a specific connotation, and I'm not sure we're doing ourselves a collaborative service by using that terminology, which is inherently limiting.
Okay.
There are elements of form-based codes that we all may think is great for this, but not all.
I will, I will note that and discuss that with town staff.
Hey, Joe, may I ask you a question? And we're, we're gonna investigate it on our side because it was surprising to me, too, when it came up in one of our internal conversations. But when you all were doing the comp plan, did, did the county attorney chime in on the legality of form-based codes in Maryland? I, I...
The county attorney?
Yeah, or the town attorney, I'm sorry.
No.
Okay. So, that's something we'll investigate a little bit.
It would be somewhat surprising considering Maryland was kind of a, I guess, a central state in, forward-looking to smart code and those types of issues, that hybrid codes would be somehow disallowed.
Yeah, we just, we couldn't point to any specific example, right, Sean? I mean, yeah.
So, if you look at the basis of a form-based code, it doesn't really relate to use as much as it relates to...
But again, and that's why we specifically say in the conference plan, it's a hybrid code. So it does build in those aspects.
So you think calling it a hybrid code gets you a different place than maybe calling it a form-based code?
Well, it does.
Okay. All right, that's, that's, that's actually the clarification I was looking for. So, thanks. That, that helps. We'll, we'll, we'll talk about that.
I think what you just said, though, is very, I think it's very helpful with what you just said, because you're gonna have limitations, too, right? And so, I mean, I think we understand that. And so...
There may be something that borrows elements of form-based. There may be something that, you know, floating zone kind of contest.
I think I'd like, I'd like you to go away with the idea that the town wants the project to succeed. The town understands that there are commercial limitations, the commercial dynamics that go along with it. Town understands that. But the town also has its own vision for that property, which hasn't gone away, which is put down here in the, in the, in the text of the zoning and in the comprehensive plan itself. And that they would be quite happy, I think, to consider those commercial dynamics. But as we see it right now, those commercial dynamics seem to be heading far too much in the way of dense housing development and housing development, which is not really applicable to the zoning that we have here. So you need to address that issue. Okay? What's, what's the minimum housing that you could get to make this project work commercially and save those buildings?
Piggybacking that, I think the biggest issue is, I don't, I think generally the people that are citizens of Sykesville, they just want to see those buildings stay, be rehabbed, and whether they're commercial, retail, or residential, it doesn't matter. But I think what the, the vision, if we presented, or if, if it got out that there was gonna be townhouses on all the properties surrounding it, I think that's something that would be difficult for people to digest. And I'm not saying that that's not where, or where it might be going, but...
My only comment is, I agree with you. I think...
It's almost like there's two projects.
Yeah, if there is, but unfortunately, they're interdependent.
I understand.
I know. I hate to say it because you can't really look at it as two projects, but it really is.
I think everyone understands that, and I think it's, it's represented in the language of the comprehensive plan and the willingness to work together.
And finances.
But in, in the way this was presented to us, and has been presented over, over several months, it seemed like a fait accompli without that kind of collaboration. And I think that's a problem that will...
And just so we're clear, the part of the reason we wanted to get in here is because we've had a collaboration before.
Indeed so.
And, and it's, it's taken, it's taken months, and it's all been very, or years, maybe. And, and that's not your fault. I'm not, I didn't look at you because I, it's your fault, Steve. Sorry. No, but I, I, it was a very, look, you were, you were threading the eye of the needle back, back then with a lot of competing interest. But it was painful, it was tough, but we, we did move it along, and it was collaborative. And we ended up closing. And some good things happened. So I, I hear what you're saying. Why don't, okay?
Okay, so we can move on to the next meeting, which, in case you wish to come back and address us in, in this forum with a modified perhaps?
And, and any feedback on the residential would be helpful, but I would also ask that we talk, have a discussion about, since we're using the word collaborative, a cordial discussion, a back-and-forth discussion about, about the interpretation of the comprehensive plan so we're on the same page, because I don't want reading it twice this past week to go to waste. And, no, I, I think it would be helpful to everybody to have that discussion.
Okay.
Okay?
Now, logistically, I'm sorry, being the, you know, the type of guy I am, I believe your next planning commission meeting is April 11.
It's the first Monday, Nick.
Fourth.
It's the fourth.
Okay, all right. It's gonna be, how much time before that meeting? Would you like to see a proposal presented to you?
We have to have it in order to share it with the commission. We have to have it the Wednesday prior.
Okay, so, so that would be April 1st.
March 30th.
March 30th.
Would be Wednesday.
I just don't like April 1st as a...
All right, so if we don't get it into you by next Wednesday, then we're not...
We're looking, we're looking at it.
If we do, then...
It's, it's actually, it's quite a, quite a task to get through this as a, as a volunteer person. Okay, so, and we need to give everybody a fact...
It's a task to write it as a, you know, for profit.
As a full-time person.
So, and, and again, you know, there's a lot of stuff there. We, we get it. Pardon us for, if, if a few sentences are misplaced, it's, if, it's just, we're, we're not that good. But we will, we will get back to you in writing to make that clarification if that, if that helps everybody feel, feel better.
Okay. Is there, is there anything else that you feel you need to say to us tonight?
Not, not tonight. I think we're...
Any further questions from the planning?
Except for thank you.
Okay.
Thank you for your patience.
I'm gonna make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Second.
One more favor?
Aye.
Please, good journey. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
That actually was good.